Do it one more time. Good job. Thank you. Thank you, Amari. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Homewood School, District 153 for May 6th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Here.
Ms. Buffay. Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman. Ms. Haverghorst. Mr. Booth?
Here.
Ms. Marks?
Here. We have a couple of board members who are running late tonight. Do we have any additions or corrections to the set of minutes from the meeting of April 8th, 2024? If there are none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have future dates?
Yes, we have a lot of dates to share. Teacher Appreciation Week started today, so we're really excited about that, and I'll have more to say about that in a little bit later in the meeting. We have our end-of-year choir, band, orchestra concerts that have been going on. The last one of that sequence is Band, which is tomorrow night. And then White Pines, the annual trip to White Pines is back, has been back, but this year our sixth graders will be returning there, and that is next week. Eighth grade, you know, trip to Great America, Dinner and Dance is coming up the third week of May. We have an early dismissal on both May 24th and May 31st. So both of those are early release days, and of course, May 31st is the last day of school. And then the highlight for our eighth graders is graduation, which is on Tuesday, May 28th. That's the day after Memorial Day, and that will be at 6 o'clock at HF High School.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any presentations tonight?
We do not.
All right. We have audience participation. You're welcome to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to say something to us, we'd ask you to come up to the microphone so that the recording can hear you. And if you could please tell us your name and your address, and we do limit comments to three minutes. So is there anyone who would like to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on up.
My name is Kimian Khrushenkov-Rogers. I'm a former teacher at Willow. I'm also a parent of a student in 153, and I'm a lifelong learner. So I prepare just a quick speech. I also was a racial affinity group facilitator this year, and I just wanted to speak to the importance of racial affinity groups. Good evening, members of the board. I'm here today to express my strong support for the implementation and continuation of racial affinity groups within our school district. Racial affinity groups play a crucial role in fostering positive and inclusive environment for both educators and students, and I believe their presence aligns perfectly with our district's strategic goals and values. First and foremost, racial affinity groups contribute significantly to boosting staff morale by providing a space for educators of color to come together, share experiences, and support one another. These groups create a sense of community and belonging that is invaluable in a diverse school environment. This sense of belonging is essential for retaining educators of color and ensuring that they feel supported and valued within the district. Racial affinity groups are instrumental in supporting the district's strategic plan to recruit and retain educators of color. By demonstrating the commitment to creative and inclusive and supportive work environment through these groups, we send a powerful message to potential and current educators of color that they are not only welcomed, but also celebrated and supported in their roles. In addition to recruitment and retention, racial affinity groups provide a space for healing and reconciliation. They allow educators to address and process issues related to race and identity in a safe and supportive environment, fostering understanding and empathy among staff members. This, in turn, contributes to a more harmonious and equitable school community. Moreover, racial affinity groups reduce isolation among educators of color by connecting them with peers who share similar experiences and challenges. This sense of camaraderie and support is crucial for professional development and personal well-being. Racial affinity groups support communication and implementation of equitable practices across the district. They serve as a platform for sharing ideas, best practices, and strategies for promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. By amplifying teacher voice and perspectives, these groups help shape district policies and practices in a way that reflect the needs and priorities of our diverse community. These groups are not only a vital resource for educators of color, but also a catalyst for positive change and progress within the district. I urge the board to continue supporting and investing in groups to ensure a more inclusive, equitable, and supportive learning environment for all. Just, I really loved working at Willow and in 153. It's important to me to share that it was challenging being the only educator of color in my grade level and feeling isolated, but I know that if you implement these groups, that lessens that. So I really want you to consider supporting this as a board. I know you all have supported it as individuals, but putting out a policy that will enable these groups to continue when funding is being pulled away, and support is being pulled away, and diversity is becoming a curse word, I really want you to consider implementing some type of group within the district that's supported and funded by the district.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like, come on up?
Hi, my name is Jenny Farley, and I live at 18148 Gottschalk Avenue. This is my posse. We started a survey, and we wrote a letter, and apparently it caused a lot of unease. And we wanted to come here and say that we have the letter. We'd like to present it to the board. We're not going to read it here. I think a lot of people have already read it. But then we're going to have a meeting with Dr. McAllister, and we met with Ms. Lawson today. And I think one of the things that we pulled out from this was summarized pretty well by my friend. She said, "We are here because we love our community. We love and want the best for all of its children, students, and we want to go out of our way to make it an equitable place for students and teachers of color in particular, an ideal I believe everyone, every individual here aspires to as well." We know representation matters. It's obvious. We know that the data supports it. We know that children of color, when they have teachers representing them, teaching to them at young ages, do much better in matriculating into the real world and being productive citizens. And regardless of the reason that Willow lost half its black teachers this year, we think such a loss warrants listening, self-reflection, and purposeful action. And I'm glad that I could follow Kimian on the speech, because I think one of the things we came out of our conversation with Ms. Lawson was, what can we do? What are the next steps to attract, support, and attain teachers of color in our student body? When my daughter started here, she's had three teachers. Two of them went to Willow and are now teaching there. And I thought that was awesome. And then her teacher now is a teacher of color, and I thought, when she started the year, I was so excited. I was so excited for her, because I never had that experience as a child. And so I want other students at Willow to also have that experience, to be able to see themselves, and if they want to become teachers, know that it's a possibility. And that's why we're here.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for articulating this so nicely.
Yeah, you're welcome.
It's appreciated.
Yeah.
Anytime. Anyone else come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we will move on then. We do have, I believe you have a response to questions or concerns raised by the audience at previous meetings.
I do. Good evening, everybody. At the April board meeting, there were two staff members who showed up to share their concerns about issues at Willow School and the district as a whole. And I guess the first thing I would say is, I'm not able to get into details. Oftentimes, what you hear, and in this case, that is true, you hear one side of the story, right? There's laws that prevent the district from sharing any specifics. That said, I want to be really clear with everybody here and everybody in the district. I think one of the things that I enjoy about working in this district is that it's a small enough place that I personally get to know every staff member by name. And there's a lot of districts where that's simply not true for the superintendent. So I take, I take things personally in that it's important to me, okay? Not I take it personally in that I feel personally attacked, but it's important to me. And so what is, what has been shared, what was shared this evening, is important to me. Three years ago, I started in this position. I've been in the district 11 years total, but three years I started as superintendent. And I met with this board, including the individuals who aren't here tonight, but it's the same people. And I really said that there were two things that I wanted to accomplish during my time as superintendent, and the first was to make this district a kinder, more welcoming place for all. I specifically said those words. I asked for the board to support our partnering with one of the leading educational companies in America, Corwin Learning, on our deep equity journey. And we have done that the last two years, and we will continue to do that next year. It's a three-year contract. And we also brought in other speakers, and staff members can attest to this. And we largely devoted our institute days, with the exception of the beginning-of-the-year institute days, to this topic. Our building principals, all of whom are here, have devoted time in their staff meetings to this topic. What I'll say is, and I always ask for feedback, I want to hear, how is it going? And not surprisingly, I get a lot of different comments. I get comments from people who say, "What you're doing is not nearly enough. We need to be doing more. We need to be doing it better." I hear comments that are the opposite of that. Enough already. This is too much. Can't we do something else on our institute days? And I hear comments that are right in the middle, which is, "I think this went well." So I guess my point is, you're never going to be able to say that we have done something to everybody's satisfaction. But I can say that it's important that we continue the work. It's important to me that we continue even when people are telling me, "Enough already." Because I think perhaps that's exactly why we need to be doing the work, right? I'm not about to profess that everything we've done has been perfect, but I also don't want people to feel that it has been perfunctory and merely meant to, quote, "check a box," right? That's simply not, that's not the way I feel. I still remain committed to this idea that I want this district to be welcoming to everybody, every student first and foremost, who walks in our buildings. And when I walk in our buildings, and when I see our staff interacting with our kids, I 100% feel that, okay? I want it to be welcoming to all of our staff, and in that regard, we have clearly not hit that mark. I feel it's welcoming, but it's certainly not where I wanted it to be after three years. And I want it to be welcoming to our families. I want every person who's seated here, and more importantly, the 2,000 who aren't, to feel welcome walking into any of our buildings, to having a conversation with me, to having a conversation with any of our staff members. So I remain committed to that. The other thing I'll say is, with regard to the numbers, you know, we have, we have tracked hiring data. We have tracked retention data. And I'll just share one, one number which says, are we where we want to be? Of course not, right? Staffing is as difficult today as it has ever been, my 32 years of education. Finding quality people is as difficult as it's ever been. But the numbers that we have, in the 1617 school year, 19% of the staff we hired that year were non-white. 1617 school year, 19%. Over the last three years, those numbers have averaged 39%. That's certified staff. That's not, that's not non-certs. Those are the certified staff members. So every one of those numbers has a name that goes with it. Every time we hire somebody, they go on my sheet. Every time they leave, they get highlighted, so I know that they're no longer here. So that's where that data came from. So it shows that we are making progress. However, when you talk about having a staff that meets or that reflects the students in your building, when 70% of your students are non-white, clearly our staff does not look that way. So we have work to do, but we are making strides, right? We are in intense competition with every other district in this regard, you know? So you throw a, you throw a staffing shortage on top of that, and it's not easy, but it's still something, again, our principals are the ones who lead the hiring effort, and they know what our district is trying to accomplish. And so I feel that the numbers are trending in the right direction, but again, to say that I am satisfied, that I'm happy, I can't and I won't, okay? All I can tell you is where my heart lies and what my interest lies, and when I leave in two years, I want it to be better than when I walked in. And I feel we're making that progress, but there's still a lot of work to do. So that's, that's my reply.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any board members who have any reports of any committee meetings or other things that you've attended that you'd like to report on?
No.
All right. Superintendent's report.
Yes, there's several items I'd like to remind people about. Registration for next school year is underway. And again, if you haven't made an appointment with the doctor, make sure you do that, because doctors get booked up quickly. If you wait until the end, kindergarten, sixth grade specifically, your child may not be able to start school on time. This past weekend, Saturday specifically, I had the opportunity to attend the Special Olympics Region E Spring Games. Those were held at Thornwood High School. And all three of our buildings had students who attended and participated in that, and it was just a wonderful day. It was beautiful weather, but more importantly, you could just see the smiles on all of the participants. And so if you've never had the opportunity to attend one of those events, I strongly encourage that you take advantage of that, and it was a special day. We have end-of-year activities, many of which I mentioned, for eighth graders. Those are in full swing. The band concert again tomorrow night, and then our track team here at James Hart. Sectionals are this weekend, so good luck to them. And also, we're getting back to something that we have done historically, which is invite our former James Hart students, who are now in high school, now seniors, graduating in just a few weeks. We are inviting back the 220 or so who attended James Hart and graduated in 2020. That, of course, was the year that our school year ended on March 13th. And so these are the eighth graders, when they were here, who the last two months of their middle school career basically ended, and they did their graduation ceremony literally right out there in the Circle Drive when they drove by, and we threw a diploma in the window of their car. So, so we're excited to be able to invite them back, and I just put this invitation out to them at HF. I got the email list, my good friend, Mr. Schmidt. We got the email list, and we already have about 71 students who have RSVP to come back. So it goes to show that they're excited about that, and like I said, we did it several years leading up until COVID, and we're excited to get back to that. I also wanted to provide everybody with an update on a very, very important piece of legislation in Springfield. You watch the news and you hear a lot about the General Assembly, and most of the time, it's in passing, and we see the governor sign, and that's kind of the extent of our interaction with Springfield. But this year, I and all of this board, and Dr. Trinberger, our business manager, have been working very, very, very diligently to try to get a specific piece of legislation passed, and that's related to the referendum. So if you go back to the referendum of November of '22, the voters, 71%, overwhelmingly approved a referendum to provide additional funding to our district. Funding that was, quite frankly, essential in order to eliminate a deficit but also address our facilities. This is the newest part of all three buildings that you're sitting in, and it is now 23 years old. So our facilities are aging. And last but not least is, we need to build up our savings accounts. You know, just like households have savings accounts for rainy days, so too do school districts. And so we need to build up our cash reserves, and we fought with the successful passing of the referendum that that would be accomplished. Unfortunately, I don't want to give a lecture on Illinois school finance, but the referendum did not yield nearly what we thought it would because of EAV values changing in the community unexpectedly. So Will Davis, our representative, has been very, very tireless in promoting House Bill 4284. And he introduced the legislation, and it successfully passed the House a few weeks ago. It is now in the Senate. And basically, Senator Harris is now the co-sponsor. And what this bill means to us is, if it is successfully passed, we would be able to recapture the referendum funds that we lost. And so it's super important for the financial health of this district and the future of this district that this bill gets approved. Supposed to be voted on by this Friday, fingers crossed, in the Senate, but we will see. But I wanted you to know that unbeknownst to anybody, this group has been working tirelessly and advocating for that. And if it gets to the point where it's going to be called for a vote, we will be reaching out for all of you. We'll show you exactly how to do it, to file a witness slip, which basically you go online, it takes 30 seconds, and your vote gets counted that, hey, people want to see this passed. So we appreciate your support if and when that vote comes. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is staff appreciation. As I mentioned earlier, every first week of May is Staff Appreciation Week, and that's where we basically say thank you to everyone who works in schools. It is a thankless job, it is a difficult job, but it's a very important job. And I shared with our staff this morning in an email, and I wanted to share it with all of you today. Yesterday, I attended a memorial service, a celebration of life, for a former James Hart teacher, Jane Hinesley. And Jane taught general music and choir here for many years, and she just recently passed. And I've often thought, for those of us who spend a lifetime in education, clearly you interact with dozens, hundreds, even thousands of kids over the course of a lifetime, and most of the time, they leave you and you never see them again. You never hear from them again. And I've often wondered, when my day comes, what are people going to remember about my career in education and the lives that I impacted? And you hope it's positive, but you don't know. So yesterday, Jane's family said, in her, in her final days, she literally pulled out a file of all the notes that she had received from former students, who she had in music and who she had in choir and whom she led in church choirs, et cetera. And they said it was one of the happiest moments of her last week of life, to know that she had that kind of impact. So to all of our staff, I just wanted to share that story, knowing that even though you may not ever get that accolade to your face, somebody may not ever say that, just know that you are having that impact on people. And we have a truly, truly special, unique job in working with people, and it's become more challenging than ever, right? Like, education today is nothing like it was even a decade ago. And I'm up here with several educators, and I think they would all agree with that, in a room full of educators, and they would agree with that. But it's still, in my opinion, the best job in the world. So to all of our, to all of our staff in every position that we have here in District 153, I want to say thank you for the impact you're having on kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I do want to just add one thing to that. On the state calendar, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, but we really believe that every single adult in our buildings is a teacher. Every single adult teaches our kids regardless of their position. And we really appreciate all of the lessons and the kindnesses that the adults in our buildings show our students, their families, and each other. And Melissa, I think you had something you wanted to add.
I was supposed to give a fun for the Little Art Show this Friday evening. We had our family reading night last weekend, and now all the flyers were sent home, so I don't think we did flyers in all of them, but Little Art Show Friday night.
Great, thank you. What time?
I knew you were going to ask that.
It's in the evening.
Yes. All right, well, you're in there.
Okay, you let me know when you know. All right. We have several items on tonight's consent agenda. The first is to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for June 2024. Any questions on the bills that are coming up?
No.
Okay, good. We are going, we need to change the date of the regularly scheduled October 2024 Board of Education meeting.
Yes, that meeting falls on Monday, the 14th, which is, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day, so we're going to move the meeting to Tuesday, the 15th.
Great. Any questions on the date change?
No.
All right. And we need to approve Title I school-wide waivers.
Each year, we have to submit a waiver so that we're able to use Title I funding for all of our students, because some of our buildings are not at the 40% threshold. So this is standard practice every year.
Any questions?
No.
From the audience? And we have disposal of outdated items.
Yes, if you went to the choir show, the James Hart Choir had brand-new robes, and they were beautiful, which means the old ones have to go. So that's what we are requesting to dispose of.
Great. Any questions on that?
No.
From the board? From the audience? Okay. And personnel report?
Yes, several items in your personnel report. I just want to point out, last, last month, we inadvertently missed Elizabeth Houston, a band teacher, who should have been received tenure. So she does appear here. Congratulations to Beth on that accomplishment. And my goodness, all sorts of other items on there, but yeah, so that's a highlight of the personnel.
Okay. Any questions on the personnel report from the board?
No.
From the audience? Any questions on any items on tonight's consent agenda? From the board? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in Items 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, and 7E.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Haverghorst?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. We have several action agenda items tonight. The first is the second payment of April 2024 bills and the first payment of May 2024 bills. Any questions on the bills?
No, none have been answered.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorized the second payment of April 2024 bills and the first payment of May 2024 bills in an amount not to exceed $2,312,865.18.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Haverghorst?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. We need to accept the tentative amended budget for fiscal year 2024.
Yes, Dr. Trinberger will speak briefly about the amended budget.
Good evening. So we talked a little bit during the fiscal year about how the administration would be bringing in amended budget, and this was primarily due to some changes with the property taxes, with the recapture levy of levy of $745,000. That was not in the original budget, as well as some additional grant funds we received for teacher vacancy and digital equity, and then the carryover amounts for, for Title I, an idea that we get every year. So that increased our revenues by a little over $1 million. On the expenditure side, we increased to about $600,000, mainly for specialized purchase services and outplaced tuition. We also did put some money in for the roofwork this summer, in case we have any invoices prior to June 30th. So the amended budget has an operating deficit of just over half a million dollars, and this is mainly due to construction. But we did learn this week that under recapture levy, with information from Cook County, I just referenced, we received $745,000. That is going to be reduced to $415,000 for our next fiscal year. I'm a little bit surprised by that, because we are not experiencing a decrease in property tax refunds, so we are not sure why the county is decreasing the recapture levy. We'll be checking with the area school districts and Dr. Grossi to see if there's any changes with other, other districts, but that is gonna continue to put pressure on the district going forward on our operating costs and our need to pay for the Churchill Roofing Project, as well as will the following year, and the need for renovation for classroom space for early childhood.
Any questions for Eric? From the board? From the audience? Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the tentative amended budget for fiscal year 2024?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education accept the tentative amended budget for fiscal year 2024 as attached.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Habegorst?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. We need to approve a two-year extension of the current contract with WIPFLI.
Yes, this is our auditor, and we are required by law to have an auditor to look at our books each year. Last year was the first year that we used WIPFLE, as we like to refer to them. And so we're asking for a two-year extension of the contract with them.
Any questions from the board? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board approve the contract extension with WIPFLE auditors. This extension covers FY '24 for a cost not to exceed $37,000, and FY '25 for a total cost not to exceed $39,000.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Habegorst?
Yes.
Ms. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. We have employment.
Yes, our principals have been busy finding people for next year, so we're pleased to bring forth the following individuals. Joyce Ford, an assistant at Willow. Nona Rydel, that is a name that is familiar to many of us, who is, was the secretary of James Hart and is returning in that role. Tamara Nestich, PE teacher at Churchill. Brenda Benuelos Campos, fourth-grade teacher at Churchill. Melanie Bagnola Bowe, social worker at Churchill. Amy Harjung, fifth-grade teacher at Churchill. Leslie Powell, kindergarten teacher at Willow. Dave McManus, second-grade teacher at Willow. And Brooke Sanders, fifth-grade teacher at Churchill. I will point out, two of those individuals did their student teaching for us. And so there's incentive programs that the state is doing to try to promote the profession. One of them is putting money towards student teachers. So part of our teacher vacancy grant is to help incentivize people who student teach here to remain with us. So Brenda Benuelos Campos and Amy Harjung both did their student teaching here this school year.
Great, thank you. Any questions on employment?
No.
From the board?
Uh-uh.
From the audience? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Joyce Ford, effective April 24, 2024. Excuse me. Nona Rydel, effective June 10, 2024. And Tamara Nestich. Brenda Benuelos. Melanie Bagnola Bowe. Amy Harjung. Leslie Powell. And David McManus, effective August 19, 2024, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report, and upon receipt no later than August 1, 2024, of evidence of proper legal qualification for the position to be filled.
Second.
I'm sorry, yeah. To the recommended action, I'm going to add the name of Brooke Sanders as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Habegorst?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. We have discussion items?
Yes, in your packet, the latest press updates. This is issue 114. So again, it's about an 80-page document of all the policy revisions recommended by the attorneys at the Illinois School Boards Association. So please look that over, and we will ask for your approval at our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Written communication to the board? I have one thing.
Go ahead.
I got a very important text that the art show is from 5:30 to 7:30. Is there any other written communication?
There isn't, but I would like to speak, if that's okay.
Of course.
Okay. I want to address the people that came to the meeting tonight that aren't usually here. I want you to know how appreciative I am, and I know all of my fellow board members are as well. I've worked with Mr. Bosch, Mrs. Marks, Mr. Schmidt, oh my God, for the last, I'm a little nervous. For the last 16 years, and I don't know, Mr. Booth has been with us maybe five or six, something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that. This topic is very, very important to all of us. My husband and I bought our house in Homewood in 1994. We still live in the same house. I know that Mr. Bosch and Mr. Schmidt have been there at least that long, and I know Mrs. Marks has been here a lot longer than that. Homewood has changed so incredibly much for the better in that time. We've seen young families move in specifically because they want their kids to be raised in a diverse community, and that is why my husband and I stayed. That's why we wanted our kids raised here. My kids graduated in 2009 and 2012 from James Hart, so I'm fairly ancient at this point. But after we'd lived on our block for, I don't know, a few years, and there would be older members of the community that lived on my block, and at the block party would make comments that, hmm, Homewood's changing, Homewood's changing, you know? And I finally got up the nerve to make comments like, Homewood's gonna be fine as soon as all the racists are gone. Don't worry about it, you know? I've seen a lot of diversity programs come and go through the district. I had the opportunity to participate long before I was a board member, when my kids were in school here. And it was awesome. I, I, maybe we can do something like this again? Maybe there's, it's, we need to keep talking to each other. That is of the utmost importance. Please keep coming to board meetings. Please continue to send these kind of letters, so we know how everybody is feeling. This is a very special place, and there's gonna be times when we get things right 100%. And there's also gonna be times when we fail miserably. But the one thing that has been so important to me as a member of this board is that no matter how successful we are, the next day, somebody says, okay, but how can we do it better next time? So even when we're successful, we're trying to be better. So I promise you that when we're not successful, we're also trying to do better.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming, and like Deb said, don't be strangers. We're here once a month. We love having people here to hear what's going on, so thank you.
You can reach all of us on our emails with the school district. I've met many parents over the years for coffee. I'm happy to do that anytime. Just send me an email.
Thank you.